For the next item, we are going to engage in an activity whereby the school board will review previous legislative priorities and then identify priorities and agenda items for the upcoming 2025 legislative session. And shall we go ahead and move down? Are you going to start the activity here?
We can go ahead and move down. I was probably going to reiterate just what you said.
All right, so if members would go ahead and move forward.
Well, hello again. Can you hear me? Okay. For those of you who have been here the past several years, you're familiar with the process. I know we have two new board members this go around. But at your table, at your space, is a copy of the legislative priorities from last year and an abbreviated scorecard, which is an excerpt from the session that we did in March to review the last legislative session. I've also included in Agenda of the Protocol to help us stay on task and adhere to the timeline. So this is a 45-minute activity. This is a professional development activity that we adopted from our Department of Professional Learning. And the bulk of the activity is the 40-minute section in the middle. And if you flipped your page over on the back, you'll see that those 40 minutes and how they are broken out. So again, today's objective is by using the legislative priorities from last year as a baseline, to gather your input from this year as you reflect on those, and for us to be able to use that input to develop our new legislative priorities for the upcoming General Assembly session. We will go through each of the rounds and notice like and wonder, where you have either four or five minutes to review and write down your reflections and thoughts on the appropriate card that you have there. And then we will go around and report out during each of these segments, one at a time. And it's not a purpose of... The purpose is not to discuss, but just to share briefly, and then we'll go in a round robin pour back. Ms. Shea has agreed again to be our timekeeper for the third year in a row. And she does such a good job that no good deed goes unpunished. And so we'll start at four minutes. And I'll ask you to take out the white card, which is the notice, and write down what your reflections are that you noticed from those documents on your table.
And the first round is what you noticed from looking at last year's priorities and the scorecard. Just what do you notice? What are some themes that might jump out to you? Or, you know, something that sparks your attention? And then in the next round, we'll talk about what you like, what you see that you think is worthy of us to consider again, or things that perhaps are missing that you would like us to include in legislative priorities. And then the third round is wonder. You wonder if, you wonder what would happen if, and then we can gather those all up. So this first round is your white card, and it's just what you're noticing about the priorities. What you see there, what you see missing.
All right. I am going to start with Ms. Atkins, and then we'll go around the room this way. If you want to share one of your notices, and then we'll go around. And if you have more than one, we'll just make another loop around, and then everybody can just say what the statement is.
Thank you, Ken. I noticed from 2024 legislative priorities that they are still aligned with the needs for 2025. There's not much that I see to be removed. I know we're going to get to some wins, but I think for the majority of what I see, they are still necessary and aligned to the needs of today. I noticed there's no comprehensive changes to funding for the J-Lar recommendations. I noticed PTR is not the same thing as class hours.
I noticed that the plan to get teacher salaries in Virginia to the national average was vetoed by the governor.
I noticed that equity is used several times when talking about safe schools and student wellness.
I also noticed in the space of special education that there's more that we can add to advocate for in that space on behalf of student, staff, and the entire system for Virginia.
I noticed a lot of green checkmarks for things that we advocated for last year.
I noticed that our diversity continues to increase, as do our numbers of multilingual learners and students with disabilities.
I noticed that the sports staff cap removal was eliminated in the conference markup.
I noticed that the barriers, looks like they've been removed for special education, even though more things can be done, I do notice that.
Also noticed that our advocacy for fully funding staff and curriculum requirements have not been fulfilled.
I noticed that the things we advocate for are things that we do every day as a division, even if we don't have the state's support, because it's what's right by kids.
I noticed that... We'll pause.
No, I noticed one of our items on here is to fully fund staffing and curriculum requirements, and I noticed that has not been done.
I noticed that every politician in the state of Virginia ran on education, so they need to fund it.
Thank you. And I want to say that we'll collect your cards, so if we didn't get a chance to get to all of the items that you highlighted there, we will make sure that we synthesize all those in the priorities that we developed, the draft priorities that we developed, that we developed, I should say. And I want to thank our Chief Communications Officer, Eileen Cox, I didn't mention her earlier, for assisting in capturing your thoughts on the board. Okay, we are going to move to the like round. And again, we will have four minutes for you to share your reflections on what you like. As an example, you could say, I like how these priorities support a safe school environment. Something to that effect, more specific or general, however you'd like. And we'll capture those, and we'll do four more minutes, and then report out again. 34 seconds left. Okay. I think next time we'll do the Jeopardy theme music that might help us know the countdown. I'm going to start with Mr. Irving, since this is where we left off.
I like that there were generally no unfunded mandates.
I like the expansion of dual enrollment courses in public high schools.
I do not want to take your thunder with Lucia Law, but I am very excited that that passed.
All right. I like that we were able to work with local legislators on both sides of the aisle to get things done this session.
I like our opening statement last year that was a plea for two legislators to consider the workload and timing of new initiatives that impact our educators and ultimately impact our students. I believe some legislators missed the memo.
I like the change in English language learner-student-to-teacher funding ratios, which are now based on student proficiency levels.
I like the continued focus on literacy when it comes to curriculum and funding.
I like that with the advocacy of you, Ken, and many here and many on the edmenting in that push to get increased funding for schools.
I like that we continue to advocate to remove barriers to qualified teachers and get them into classrooms where they can positively impact students.
I like the initiatives we've implemented and funded in Henrico, like the Henrico Cares Program, Career Ladder, and $25 an hour for our bus drivers.
I like that our special education career switchers bill was signed into law.
I like that Henrico County and HCPS cover a lot of gaps in funding from state, especially when it comes to mental health services and school safety.
And this is not listed in the presentation, but from being in the GA and listening to many people champion for many things that's in this HCPS priority, that actually helped lead to the Consolidation Appropriation Act of 2024. And I'll give you a little bit more context after you read that. But that particular bill that passed is going to assist with key social safety net programs, and that includes food assistance, affordable housing, WIC, and also is going to help with gender-based violence prevention, bullying, cyberbullying, all of those things. And so listening to folks really advocate for some of the things that Henrico County has in here leads up to some of the bigger legislation that goes into discussions. And part of this, I think this was carried by McClellan, led to some really great things in this space.
And that is time, time to wonder.
Okay. So the wonder round is where we can really look forward to adding additional items for next year that we can advocate for. And it's more where the first two were a little more reflective. This one is a little more forward-thinking about what can we add or change. So we have five minutes for your review and writing of the notes on the card, the colored card. And just as an example, is I wonder how we can reduce barriers to teacher licensure, for example. So something like that, that you'd like to see, that maybe is not in there, it could be something additional, build on, building upon what's already there. So five minutes. I think we left off with Ms. Cancelo last time, or was it?
Let me see where to begin. I wonder if and when universal free lunch will be available in Virginia.
I wonder why our proeducation governor vetoed our teachers getting paid what they deserve.
I wonder how much better our schools could be if we improved the counselor-to-student ratio, benefiting both students and reducing workload. Yeah, I wonder how much better our schools could be if we improved the counselor-to-student ratio, benefiting both students and reducing workload.
I wonder how we could incorporate policies around construction that focus on wellness and develop formulas that tie back to the number of windows that are required for new construction, and also tying that back to evidence base of the impact of sunlight and absorption of vitamin D, also increasing calmness and reducing anxiety, and policies that ensure that we're using non-toxic materials in the construction process.
I wonder how much education would transform if appropriate SOQs were actually funded by the state.
I wonder how different it would be if the VDOE would provide complete models, guidance, and training before rolling out new initiatives.
I wonder what it would be like if all students from kindergarten till 12th grade had recess.
I wonder how much more impactful our schools could be if state legislators expanded funding and support for students facing housing instability and food insecurity.
All right. Well, I wonder what we would see if legislators truly understood and supported a positive code of ethics for individualized education programs, which promote a positive approach for parents and advocates while fostering excellence in conducive learning environments. And I'm specifically speaking to Senate Bill 1334.
I wonder how we can help legislators understand the unnecessary barriers to dual enrollment, instructional qualifications. Also, I wonder, even though we're out of time, if we can go around the table one more time.
I wonder how we can better support our students dropping out of high school to work, and when will Virginia divisions get credit for these students that ultimately earn their GED?
I wonder why all portions of accreditation, going down to even playground equipment, are not provided, were not provided with funding by the state when it's something that they require.
I wonder how we can strengthen collaboration with our state legislators, especially with three of them serving on the Education Committee.
I wonder why legislators are not in full support of the J-Lock recommendations.
I wonder if the same items appear year after year on our list because legislators don't notice, or don't understand, or are unwilling to fix them. That was all the way around. Sorry.
Well, thank you so much for your input. And the last few minutes that we have are the reflections of Eileen and I, listening to your input. And I've, I'll go first. I jotted down some notes that seem to be recurring themes. And those are the consistency of our priorities over the years. And to go along with the last comment that you made, Ms. Shea, the repeat items. I think that because something that appears repeatedly isn't necessarily a bad thing, I'm not implying that you're saying it's a bad thing, but I think that it just, sometimes you see something just on the board for a long time and before it is able to really gain some traction, but it's kind of the old adage, you know, you just keep knocking on the door and ultimately, it, you know, hopefully it will rise to the, to a higher level. Funding items are still a need, although I think there has been incremental progress. We, that's kind of always a moving target and always something that we need to continue to advocate for. Another theme was making it easier to recruit and retain teachers and other employees. Back to the, to funding, the true funding of SOQs. A lot of mention for advocacy to, to support things like housing instability, food insecurity, wraparound services. And I think on several occasions, I heard the, what can we do to help legislators truly understand the issues that we have? And there's, kind of along with that is the strengthening of the collaboration with our legislators, several of which serve on the, on the Education Committee. I think the last thing I'll say is that your advocacy is very important, in addition to me being down there on a daily basis. When, and I will do my best to keep you all updated on when particular bills are on the agendas of committee or subcommittee meetings. I think there are times when, if it's at all possible, that you could come down and speak, or just contact the legislator via, you know, email or phone call or something. I have seen how powerful that really is, and I think the legislators respect local school board members very much. In fact, many of them are former school board members. And so, if, if you're able to during this session, and you can make time to do that, I think that's, it would be worth your while.
So, our purpose in, in having some reflective time with you is to make sure that we're capturing or understanding appropriately the things that you've said, so that we can go back and, and look at the priorities and bring them back to you. So, if there's something that you hear from us that's not correct, please, you know, jump in, let us know. I think that what I heard was that you all have been strategic to this point, so that the priorities don't change every year, right? So, the priorities and keeping your eye on the ball, it's the same ball. You might have some additional priorities that come in, but we're not throwing everything out and starting from scratch. I also heard that you all appreciate the progress that we've made, but we're not going to become complacent. And so, you would like us to go back and, at the topics that you selected in the Wonder or in the like categories, how do we advance that to the next level? How do we build upon perhaps some of the progress that we've made, but also look for opportunities to take on some of these new topics as well and keep moving forward? So, that's what we're going to do. Our next step will be that we'll take this all back. Dr. Cashwell will have time to have input as well from the instructional perspective and also with the division leadership team. And then, we will bring that back to you. Ken will bring that back to you. And I believe, Dr. Cashwell, if you would like to also offer some thoughts before we wrap up.
I just want to thank you both for facilitating the activity with the board. And I know that it's very fruitful to have an opportunity to hear from board members directly in this format. And so, as we're transitioning back to the dais, Mrs. Atkins, Chair Atkins, if it's okay with you, we take a five-minute recess.
Yeah, we just have a quick, where they get to go around.
Okay, so after the, I didn't mean to cut the activity short. So, after the one-minute wrap-up, then, we'll take a five-minute recess before coming back to the dais and getting settled back. Thank you.
Perfect. So, Mr. Young, do you want to start us off?
Sure. I guess to kind of wrap up things, I really like just keeping up with the theme that our priorities really hone in on what we want to see done, and it's really clear-cut to me. And another thing is that we heard funding a lot, and a lot of our problems come from funding. But I would also like to see some sort of committee that helps us solve problems that funding doesn't account for. I would like to see something thinking outside of the box of funding, what we can solve for issues, because that seems to be the barricade when it comes to getting our legislation passed. Thank you.
I also want to thank you, Ken, and Eileen, and all of my school board colleagues. It's an awesome opportunity, not just for us, but for the public, to hear our different personalities through our words and understand some of the things that we may have focused on, or perhaps in this moment just are at top of mind. It's so healthy to hear each other's thoughts. I also feel very strongly that with funding, we can accomplish quite a bit. And when there is money, we should receive it. That is as simple as that gets. The other part is around wellness. I don't know if it's captured here, but I would like for it to be captured somewhere that we have stronger advocacy and push around wellness. I mentioned it just from a construction perspective. I would like for us, as a division, to push even stronger. We are still in recovery from COVID, and we are in the midst of a mental health crisis with our children. And so, I do think having some level of advocacy in that space as, as we get into the General Assembly. Other than that, we've had some major wins, and we should acknowledge that, keep pushing for that. And I look forward to learning more about what you come up with when you summarize all of these things.
Thank you. Similar to Mr. Young, noticing that really, much like last year, a lot of these focus around funding, right? And that can often be the barrier to getting things through. We should absolutely continue to advocate for appropriate funding for our schools. Absolutely. But also, I think one of the reasons we were able to have so many wins last year is that we advocated for a lot of concrete things that were not directly based in funding. And so, things like Mr. Irving brought up, looking into recess, or dual enrollment, IBP process, while those may have some financial impacts, they're not rooted in major budgetary investments like universal lunch and SOQs and those things, which we should absolutely continue to advocate for. But how can we think outside the box and get wins that don't have as large of a budgetary impact, but make the difference for our students and our staff and our communities?
I appreciate this session. I appreciate you two facilitating it. I really liked our priorities last year. And I'd like to continue to build on them, right? Because the needs continue to change. And another thing that I noticed, because it is, a lot of it is about the funding. And to your point, Mrs. Shea, some things can be fixed by policy and, and other adjustments that are not monetary. But again, every single politician in the state ran on education. They do need to fund it. And then, I just noticed, again, I know we talk about Henrico and how we work with our counterparts and how fortunate we are, because as our enrollment has leveled off, or in some cases declined, our budget is approaching $1 billion. So, the needs of our students and families continue to increase. So, we are fortunate to have our government counterparts here in Henrico to help us with the funding until funding comes from the state.
So, I thank you both for facilitating this. I think it's an incredibly useful activity, and it's always fun to kind of participate in an event like my, like my students would in class. My, my reflection on this, I think, is that if you are a citizen of Henrico and you care about these things, and I truly believe that most of our citizens do care about education, because we're one of the only localities to ever vote to impose a tax on ourselves for education. I think that when next year comes around, and we do have our state elections, it's important to pay attention to the people who do support these things, because elections do matter. And the people that we get into state office are the ones that provide a lot of this funding that we're asking for. So, it's important to pay really close attention to who shares your values and who supports the things that have been laid out here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I, I think, just to wrap up, as you're further reflecting, if there is anything specific that you think would, could be fashioned into a bill, please let me know about that, and we can try to be very specific and get somebody to sponsor such a bill. So, thank you again very much. And I think we're adjourned here.
And we'll take a five-minute recess.
Five-minute recess.